I would. I would like to call this meeting of the Public Schools. Our Robinson County Board of Education in order. First, we will have a moment of silence and before we have the moment of silence, let's remember the victims in Western North Carolina for Hurricane Helena. Also, there's another hurricane out there and it's Hurricane Milton supposed to hit, you know, east coast of Florida and Tampa and stuff tonight. So just think about them during the moment of silence. Thank you. First up, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and that's by Roland Norman Elementary School and that'll be by Mr. Brown. And we're going to do it just like we do it in the morning. We're not going to use afternoon and evening and all that. We're going to be saying in the morning because that's when we do it because they'd be saying it along with me. Are we ready, dinosaurs?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all getting a straight line, come on. Okay. Good morning, dynamite dinosaurs. Welcome to Dino Land. Please be respectful and stand for the reciting of our pledge allegiance to our nation's flag and our Dino Force Stand Up for our school. We have with us this morning our Flag Patrol and they are. And you may begin. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now our Dino Force Stand Up for our school. You may begin. Be prepared, be a thinker, be respectful, be safe. Thank you, dynamite dinosaurs and always remember when you believe, you achieve. When you achieve, you succeed. You never, ever, ever use this failure as an option. Always use it as a motivator to move forward. Do bigger, better, greater things in life. I thank you, dynamite dinosaurs. You have a blessed educational day and you give yourself a mighty roar. Next, we'll have the adoption of the gender. Been prop- uh, emotions being made by Mr. Henry Brewer, a second being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All in favor? All opposed? Um, approval of open session minutes? A motion has been made to approve open session minutes by Mr. John Simmons. A second being made by Mr. Henry Brewer. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, it's got it. All right, information items. The National Beta Club School of Merit Recognition, Dr. Dorsey Wendy Carr and Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson and Board Members. Tonight, we would like to recognize our schools who have earned the 2023-2024 National Beta School of Merit Award for their outstanding Beta Club organization work. This distinction sets schools apart and highlights their exceptional commitment to fostering leadership and academic excellence among students. The achievement is a testament to the hard work and dedication of these schools and their Beta Clubs. The National Beta School Merit Award is given to honor a club's dedication and commitment to academic excellence. To achieve this prestigious honor, a school must include members from all eligible grade levels in their Beta Club. National Beta is proud to recognize an outstanding 5,550 schools as National Beta School of Merit recipients and we have quite a few of them tonight for you. So I'm going to call each school name and when I do, I would like the principal and the Beta sponsor to come forward for a picture with the board. Principals, if you have a banner as a school of distinction as well, please bring that banner with you for the pictures. So at this time, I would like to ask all board members to come forward so that we can have a great photo opportunity for our schools. Maybe they stand back here. This is when I'm going to feel like I'm right in the middle, but that's not where I want to be. Okay? All right. Okay. So our first National Beta School of Merit Award winner is Fair Grove Elementary School. If they would please come forward. Shake hands, we'll do a photo op and I'm going to get out. Our next winner at the elementary division is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm ready. Thank you, sorry. Okay, our next winner from the elementary division is Fairmont Middle School. Come on forward. Our next winner at the elementary division level is Littlefield Middle School. If we would have Long Branch Elementary School, please come forward. Okay, Magnolia Elementary is a winner at the elementary division as well as the junior division. So Magnolia, would please come forward.
Congratulations, my man.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We have Parkton Elementary School, who is also a winner at the junior division level. Our next winner at the elementary level is Peterson Elementary School. Our next winner at the elementary level is Piney Grove Elementary School.
I won't tell you any secrets.
Our next winner is Prospect Elementary School, who is also a merit winner at the junior division level as well.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Awesome job. Thank you.
If we could have Southside Ashpool Elementary School come up as a National School of Merit Award winner? Okay, our last winner in the elementary category is Townsend Elementary School. Okay, on to our junior division winners. We have Deep Branch Elementary School. We have the Lumberton Junior High School as our next winner.
Congratulations.
Carroll Middle School. Aura Middle School is our next junior division winner. Our next National School of Merit is Oxendine Elementary School. Our next winner is Red Springs Middle School. Our next winner is South Robinson Middle School. We have St. Paul's Middle School as a national merit winner. We have Union Chapel Elementary School. And our last, but not least, our winner of the junior division category is Union Elementary School. Okay, we're moving on to our senior division winners. We have Lumberton High School. We have our Early College at RCC. Purnell Sweat High School.
Good job.
Good job.
Don't know what to say.
Congratulations.
We have Red Springs High School. St. Paul's High School. And we have Fairmont High School. The Fairmont High School. All right, all right. So we're going to move on to our National Beta Convention winners. This summer, we had several students bring home top awards from the National Beta Convention events held in Georgia. In July, we recognized South Robinson Middle School student Terrell McNeil, who made history as he was appointed to serve as Secretary for the National Junior Beta Club Organization. Tonight, we would like to recognize several students who brought home awards from the National Beta Club Convention in a variety of events and categories. So when I call your name, if you would please come forward with your Beta sponsor and principal for a picture with the Board of Education members. So from the elementary national convention, we have Olivia Hunt from Pembroke Elementary School, accessorized design elementary, third place. Representing Pembroke Elementary School, we have Ilya Lewis, who is accepting on behalf of her school's team for service learning showcase elementary, third place. We'd also like to recognize Zoe Hunt from Pembroke Elementary School for Fiber Arts Elementary, fourth place. Come forward. We have Eli Hammond from Pembroke Elementary School, digital arts elementary, fourth place. We have Eli Hammond from Pembroke Elementary School, Digital Arts Elementary, 4th place. And Raylin Hunt from Pembroke Elementary School, Hand-Drawn Animal Elementary, 10th place. Anna May. So I'm gonna listen to some letters. Anna May Elementary, 10th place. From Saint Paul's Elementary School, Beta Serves, 6th place. So we have a representative from Saint Paul's Elementary School. From the Junior National Beta Convention, we have Giselle Rodriguez from Red Springs Middle School, Spanish 8th Grade, 7th place. Not look like she's able to be here. From our Senior National Convention, we have Gracianna Parker from our Early College, Language Arts, 10th Grade, 3rd place. We have Amaya Bullard from Purnell Sweat High School, Jewelry Division 2, 5th place. Fabi Tolantino Rayon from the Early College, On-Site Drawing Division 1, 9th place. And we have Alexis Lowery from Purnell Sweat High School, Performing Arts, Senior Solo Duo Trio Vocalist, 10th place. We'll move on to the next one, okay? So let's congratulate all of our National Beta Club Convention winners. And at this time, we would like to recognize the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina Council of Teachers in Mathematics, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Outstanding Elementary Mathematics Teacher for 24-25. This recipient strives to recognize and do outstanding work. NCCTM and NCDPI like to reward mathematics teachers who exemplify mathematics teaching excellence by nurturing students' enthusiasm for math through everyday experiences. This recognition is for those teachers who succeed in motivating students to excel in math. At this time, please join me in congratulating Ms. Shannon McNeil, our 20-24-25 NCCTM and NCDPI Outstanding Elementary School Mathematics Teacher. If you would please come forward. So just so you know, Shannon is a 3rd grade teacher at Oxendine and has been teaching for 11 years. She received her Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary from Saint Andrews University. So as her award honoree, she will receive a free 1-year membership in NCCTM. She'll be recognized at the NCCTM 2024 Annual Conference held in Winston-Salem. She will have a special conference feature there. She will receive another award, and we are extremely proud of her. So congratulate her one more time, please.
She's catching up on all the news and all that.
I'm sorry. I talked with her mother.
Again, congratulations to all of our winners and to the principals and teachers that support our kids. What an honor for them to be recognized for their academic excellence, and we're just so proud of them. October is National Principals Appreciation Month. And it's just an honor to say to our principals, thank you for all that you do every day that we honor you. We'll honor you again in May on Principal Appreciation Day. But want you to stand so we can say thank you. And to our board members, tonight, you're gonna see evidence in our growth data of the instructional leadership that our principals are doing every day in our buildings. You're gonna see, it's gonna be impressive when you take a look at that. Principals, please stand. Again, thank you so much. You know, it's amazing the weight that they have on their shoulders to lead a building, to lead our employees and our students, and be involved in the community. It's a heavy lift and a heavy weight, but y'all do it exceptionally, exceptionally well. So thank you, and again, we honor you.
Next, next we have Hispanic Heritage Month by Jennifer Freeman.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. I too would like to congratulate the principals for the work they do, as well as thank the students that put forth all the efforts. National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September the 15th through October the 15th. Heritage, Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes and honors the histories, cultures, and peoples that make up the very powerful and beautiful communities throughout our nation. Join with me in celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month, and thank you for all that you do and all the peoples that you represent.
Title I Pre-K by Jamie Flanagan.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and members of the Board. I'm here tonight to briefly provide an overview of the Title I Pre-K program. Early childhood academic experiences are critical for setting a lifetime learning trajectory. Ninety percent of brain development takes place by the age of five. Disadvantaged children can enter kindergarten as much as 18 months behind their peers developmentally. I often like to bring attention to what we call the 30 million word gap. Research has shown that children from low-income families may hear as many as 30 million fewer words than their more affluent peers. That's why the work that we do is so important. So education is the continuum, right? And children need an aligned, high-quality educational experience from cradle to career. Our program promotes and supports developmentally appropriate practice by way of three core considerations. Commonality in children's development and learning, individuality reflecting each child's unique needs and their unique characteristics. And then the third one is the context in which development and learning occur. The work that we do establishes the foundation for future academic success. So I would like to just take a moment and thank Dr. Williamson and also Ms. Freeman for always supporting me, for supporting my team, our program, and most importantly, our youngest learners. So at full capacity, the Title I Pre-K program can serve 411 children across the district. We have Title I Pre-K in 20 of the 21 elementary schools. East Robinson is the only one that we do not serve, but they do provide NC Pre-K, which is a similar but separate program. We begin taking applications in January of each year, and then we screen to determine eligibility during the first full week in May. Eligibility for Title I Pre-K is determined based on multiple educationally relevant objective criteria. So that includes family interviews, that includes teacher observations, and also a developmental screening. I then use a point system to consolidate those results. So I shared, have shared with you a copy of the Title I Pre-K handbook that I created. So I saw the need for this handbook a couple of years ago. Our program is governed by both DPI and the Division of Child Development and Education, Early Education, which essentially means we have to comply with childcare laws and rules, just as if we were a childcare center, even though we are housed in public school buildings. So I felt that we needed something to supplement the school handbooks that are distributed, something that specifically focused on childcare rules, because we are so tightly regulated. So by creating this, it provided a basic overview of our standard operating procedures, the childcare laws and rules, and then general guidance in relation to our program. This handbook covers everything from curriculum to assessments to health and safety, kindergarten transition, family engagement, and everything in between. It really is a good night, a good read on a night when you can't read Sleep Dr. Manuel. So teachers complete a transition report at the end of each year, which is a legislative requirement to support the state's transition to kindergarten efforts. The report includes formative assessment results on children who've attended Pre-K, and it's shared with kindergarten teachers through Eli. This data is instrumental to kindergarten teachers at the beginning of the years. It provides advanced information on incoming students, and it can also be used to support class placement as well. I randomly reached out to a few kindergarten teachers, none of whom I know personally, just to be able to provide you with some information on the direct impact of our program in terms of student academics and kindergarten readiness. And the teachers all agreed that they are able to easily differentiate between students who had attended Pre-K and those who had not. Teachers said that students who attended Pre-K enter kindergarten able to identify letters and sounds. They can write their first and last names. They have better listening skills, better social skills. And they also said that they entered kindergarten ready to learn, because they're already accustomed to school procedures and routines, and they thought that that was, you know, very helpful. And I wanted to share this piece because the premise of Title I Pre-K is to eliminate disparities in student achievement. And if you circle back to the 18-month deficit that I mentioned earlier, not only are we leveling the playing field, but in some instances, our students are outperforming some of their peers when they enter kindergarten. So our impact is evident even early on. But in closing, Dr. James Heckman is a Nobel Prize recipient and a professor of economics at the University of Chicago. He has done extensive work on trying to understand the huge gains of investing in early education. And his work has shown that high-quality early education programs can deliver a 13% return on investment. So the work that we're doing in our district in the field of early education is positively impacting our students, it's impacting their future, and our community. So please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns. My cell number, as well as my email address, is included in the handbook. And I see that Dr. Manuel has a question.
Dr. Manuel.
Ms. Flanagan, you've explained Title I, and I'm familiar with the regulations. How does a North Carolina preschool, Shining Stars, i.e., are you separate from them? How do you all coordinate, collaborate? In other words, do you have a different curriculum? Are your children mixed together in classrooms, the North Carolina preschool children and your children, Shining Stars children? Explain to us, because it sounds like the way you're explaining it, that it's two separate programs, the curriculum and all that. Now just sort of sum it up.
Okay.
How you collaborate, coordinate with those two programs?
So it is two separate programs. There are two major differences in the program, one being the funding source, and then the other being how we determine eligibility for services. So Title I Pre-K is federally funded, and it's based on academic need. NC Pre-K is funded through the state, and it's based on family income. In terms of collaboration, the collaboration piece is there. We do use the same curriculum. Teachers have to have the same requirements. We use the same assessment tool. So a lot of those pieces align, but the biggest differences, of course, are the funding source and eligibility.
So it's just the funding source. Now, let me ask a question. Do you have classes where you have NC Pre-K schoolchildren and Title I mixed?
I do.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am. So I do receive a small amount of supplemental funding for some of my students. So, I do receive a small amount of supplemental funding for some of my students from the NC Pre-K program. I have to apply for this funding based on the contract life cycle, which is every three years, and we are coming up on that renewal cycle next month. But, and that funding is based on slot allocation, which is determined by the local NC Pre-K site selection committee.
Tell me one more question, follow-up, Ms. Chair. How is it determined the number of slots you get preschool?
So, that is a decision that's made by the NC Pre-K site selection committee through the Partnership for Children. So, we have to apply, they go out and do site selection visits, and then they determine the amount of slots that we are allocated.
I'm talking about federal funding, right?
That's for NC Pre-K.
Okay, I understand that totally, but I'm asking, how do you, you said you had four hundred slots. Who determined those four hundred slots? Because we need every slot we can get to reach every child, so I'm trying to find out how you could get more slots.
And so, the four hundred slots is based on my licensing capacity. So, the state comes in and says, you can only have fifteen children in this classroom. So, that's how our slots are determined as far as Title One Pre-K.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Data Dive 2021 through 2024 by Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Carr and Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson and Board members. This evening, we are sharing the historical data that has been recently certified. This data from this year has just certified last week by the State Board, and so we're going to look at the historical data across the last four years to show what impact instruction has had in the classrooms over the past four years since COVID. So, what you'll see on here, each board member has a packet. So, what we showed here is the change that the state had, the change that each school had, and what the public schools of Robinson County had. So, if we look at all EOGs and EOCs combined, we can see that in grade level proficiency, the state of North Carolina grew over the first, last four years, eight point eight percent. When we look at Robinson County, we grew fifteen percent. If we look at CCR, we will see that we grew, the state grew six point six percent, and we grew eight point eight percent. As you can see, all the schools, a hundred percent of the schools increased in GLP across the last four years. So, if you look at these two, first two slides, which includes all the schools, you'll see the increase that each school had over the last four years. Now, if we look at math EOG, this is a similar trend. So, that you'll see in math, the state in GLP increased fourteen point six percent, we increased twenty-one point six percent. If you look at CCR, the state increased by twelve point eight percent, and we increased by eleven point seven percent. And you will see across the district, everybody but one school saw an increase in GLP, and everybody saw an increase in CCR. Then if you look at reading, reading across the state, once again, they grew four point five percent in GLP or grade level proficiency. Robinson County grew seven point two percent, and then in career and college ready, the state grew two point five percent, and we grew three point five percent. We know that based on the, everything that we've put in place, the third grade group that comes in in twenty-five, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six will be the first group that will have actually started with the curriculum and take the assessment. So, currently, we have no group that has done that, so third grade next year, twenty-five, twenty-five, six will be our first group that will start with the beginning, with that curriculum. If we look at science, we see that the state increased in GLP five point eight percent. In Robinson County, we did sixteen point one. You look at career and college ready, we increased five point nine percent, we increased fourteen point nine. A hundred percent of our schools went up in GLP in science over the last four years. So, now, if we look at the high schools, you see in biology, the state went up seven point eight percent since, in the last four years, Robinson County went up twenty-five percent. If we look at career, career and college ready, the state went up six point two percent, and the district went up twenty-one point five percent. Then if we look at English, we see the state went up one percent, and Robinson County went up four point one percent. And in CCR, we went up one, they went up one percent, and we went up three point three percent. In math one, we saw that the state went up eleven point nine percent, we went up nine point two percent. In CCR, the state went up six point four percent, and we went up two point nine percent. And once again, you'll see a hundred percent of our schools went up in GLP.
Dr. Carr, let me ask.
Yes.
Those math scores do not reflect eighth graders?
No, no eighth graders in that math one. That is only high school math one scores. If we look at math three, over the last four years, the state went up thirteen percent, we went up thirty point eight percent. In CCR, we went up, the state went up nine, and we went up fourteen point eight. So, this is the data that reflects the changes since the standards were reset, and so you'll see over the last four years, as we've been implementing different things and what we've been doing, you'll can see the impact at each school. Any questions about that data before we get into school improvement?
I, I do want to say to our principals, three years, four years ago, we started the conversation, principals, that you have to be the instructional leader in your building, not by definition, but by practice, and it's evidence in this growth data that you've done that. So, I'll say to the principals, thank you for your hard work, thank you for your instructional leadership, let's keep pushing so that our kids can, can achieve, because they're demonstrating clearly that they can. So, thank you, principals, thank you, district staff, for your work and your support. In every case, almost, we doubled over the last three or four years.
Mrs. Chair. Thank you, Chairman Leach. I have a, a question, Mr. Leach. I'm the chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee, and we've been, we, we sent some proposed agenda items over a few weeks ago, and one of the items on that, on that proposed agenda was a, a deep dive, and I'm wondering, because I, here's where I stand. I have a few questions about this data, just, just a few, but I'm more interested in what we're going to be doing moving forward, because as a committee, I think we're here, or as a board, I think we're here to influence, influence change, and I appreciate the opportunity to hear these, this information tonight, but I'm wondering if this discussion is, is going to serve as a substitute for the curriculum committee meeting?
No.
I'll be happy to answer that, Chair. One of the reasons, and again, we made reference in the beginning, this data was just certified last week by the State Board, and so we did not need to share growth data without it being certified, subject to change, because if we had presented that and our data would have changed, that would have been an issue. We will have some dates after tonight that we can sit down in a curriculum meeting, but the reason we couldn't, September's kind of early, and the data was not certified.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Kristy Fields.
On the reading EOG grades three through eight, you have a sixty percent decrease for twenty-three, twenty-four, which would be your third graders with this curriculum. What is set in place to make sure going forward, we see increases and not decreases?
So, in a minute, you'll see the plan that we're putting in place for the district's improvement plan, but part of what we know is based on the data over the last, at least ten, fifteen years, K-two has been a struggle. That has been the data that we've looked at. The curriculum that we have put in place, K-two is a heavy focus on skills block, phonics and phonemic awareness. So, what we're trying to ensure is that we set that strong foundation. We know in sixth, seventh and eighth, we still had students that were struggling with reading and decoding text, and so what we're trying to do there is using such things as classworks to help with some of those gaps we're filling in, and restructuring intervention time so that we can address those particular areas. It varies based on school, and so each school was a different situation, that we've had many discussions about why the data is reflected the way it is, and we would be more than happy to sit one-on-one with anybody to go through why certain schools are seeing certain patterns.
Also, one of the things that falls under Senate Bill 387 is the requirement for an individual reading plan. So, that's something that we put in place for our students from kindergarten through third grade, if they're demonstrating reading gaps or they have challenges. So, that's something, at this point, all of our teachers are going through their data, their BOI data from Amplify, they're identifying those students, trying to identify that highest leverage skill that they need to get in order to move them forward with their reading. So, that's something we put in place to provide extra support and try to target the reading skill that might be the challenge, instead of just trying to cast, cast a net and hope that we get them.
Well, the issue is, you, when you look at your, your highest performing school, and then you look at the next highest performing, there's a thirty-eight percent variance. So, somebody's getting it right, but again, I ask, why are we not collaborating with the schools that are getting it right, so that we're all doing it right and we're having some real growth?
I would say that we actually do collaborate and try to determine some of those strategies that might be working in certain schools, and we do share those, because we want all of our kids to succeed. Now, when you start looking at gaps between one school and another, it's hard to look at a gap between a K-three school and perhaps a K-eight school, right? There's lots of different variables, there's different, you can target differently when you're in third grade, but absolutely, we do want to learn from each other. If we can identify a promising practice in a school, and we know it works, we're going to put it in place. And I think our principals are really great about sharing what's working, they're sharing their data, we're very transparent amongst our principals, and talk about what our challenges are, and they are sharing strategies. In fact, we will be also doing some principal walkthroughs where principals get to go visit other schools, and our hope is that we highlight those model classrooms as well for them.
And so, we're making sure we're providing support for K-two so that they're ready for third grade?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've put in a new DIBELS eight data protocol that we started towards the end of last year, so that every benchmark data is analyzed, we analyze it by grade, by skill, by subgroup. We also have a district RTA team that breaks down the data, so we can see if there's trends across the district, and if there's a need, we come back and fill in the gaps.
And we're being proactive and not reactive?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good question.
If, if I may, let me ask, Dr. Carr, when did the state re-norm the reading test?
They rescaled it all during the COVID, and so we cannot compare the assessment results from pre-COVID with these assessments, because they rescaled it. So, that's why when we got our reports previously, they had to rescale everything to show us our impact.
And then the second thing I would make note of is, we're operating in an aligned management system with a common core curriculum. That makes it easier to collaborate and meet, to have that common language, that was the intent of that, and that is happening with our principals, we have them with us tonight. They can answer any question that you might have, but that's the value of having a core curriculum, the same in every building, using a common language and alignment, and we're seeing the evidence of the growth. Again, tremendous growth over a short period of time, closing that gap faster than the seen.
Dr. Manuel.
This goes back to Mr. Terry's response, and I heard, this is the second time I've heard this, we'd be glad to sit down with each board member. I, at the curriculum meeting, I don't see anything wrong with you all giving us a general list. We sat down with our principals, and this is what we found. The other night, you gave us a couple instances, what you found, but as far as each one of us having to sit down and, and hear what you found, I don't see the need for that. What about at the curriculum meeting, just say, look, and you don't have to give us the principal's name, you could just say, we found these as strong weaknesses, why we may have went back in reading or math or science. I don't understand the reasoning for taking each one of us individually. You don't, like I said, I don't care, I have no taste at all to chastise a principal. I just want to know what weaknesses did you find? And some things are obvious. You may have had an instance where you had a teacher out forty-six days in the children misinstruction some way. There, there are things that we, I would like to know, what did you find that they slid back? And you even shared that you have, you could narrow it down to one particular teacher in one grade level. See, those are things that I would like to hear, but I don't see a need to just sit down by myself and hear it. Why not share it with the curriculum meeting? I mean, that, we don't actually want you to come to the board and say, these are da-da-da-da, these are things that we would like to hear. And also, I saw in one of the hand notes you gave us, some things you plan to do to alleviate those shortages, that's wonderful, but yet, we're still, there's a vacuum that I would like to know, what did you find when you went out there? And like I said, and I don't see a problem, would you share some of those things with us? And I, I would have to support Mr. Terry on that part, but not the chastised principals, not the chastised teachers. These are general things we found at schools.
If I may, Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Manuel, we never said there was a problem with that. We're saying we're not going to share the data until it was certified by the state. Two different things altogether. Now that the data has been certified by the state, we'd be happy, the invitation to sit down one-on-one with just that. We have new board members that did sit down with us one-on-one, that were able to dive a little bit deeper, that really, I believe, made, made a difference with some, but none of that's a problem for what you're asking, and we will do that. We just couldn't do it until the State Board of Education certified our data. Not a problem.
But now, this goes deeper than that, or there may be some circumstances that, excuse me, may I say?
Yes.
There may be some circumstances that cause that data to dip, like attendance for children, attendance for teachers, things of that nature, not following the curriculum. Those are things that, it's not a thirty-four percent or fifteen percent, those are things that could have affected the data, and those are things that you ladies would share, not a specific teacher, not a specific principal, but general things that we would like to hear, I would like to hear. I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm finished.
Mrs. Terry.
And, and, and let me say, my, um, my, I, I've spent quite a bit of time in this data myself, and I know enough about numbers that you can make them look any way that you can finagle them, and you can make them look whatever way you want to make them look. That's why I like doing my own, that's, that's why I like doing my own analytics and my own data. So, and let me just say to the principals and teachers that's, that's here, everybody on this board, I, I, well, I can't speak for the board, but I can speak for myself, I appreciate everything that you do every day, and my approach in terms of, and I think Dr. Manuel would, would share this sentiment, my approach to being a, a curriculum committee chair is not at the school level. You know, as board members, you know, I think our job is to, to try to impact or influence change at, at, at this district level. So, and I appreciate Dr. Manuel's support on what we were getting at earlier, but just, I mean, you can pull up these numbers, and it looks like Greek to most people, but I just pulled up some numbers myself earlier, and in, in twenty-one, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had twenty-two low-performing schools, and this past year, we had twenty-six. So, I mean, that's an easy thing to discuss, and this is not an indictment of any schools. This is just a discussion in which we need to determine the secret sauce of what's, what they're using at the schools that have been successful, and how can we, as a board, support or better offer support to those that may be falling through the cracks? It's just like Dr. Manuel said, it may be one or two teachers, or one or two classrooms, or, or whatever. That's the kind of information that, that we need to hear in the discussions that we need to be having, and I'm, I'm going to be honest with you, I, I like everyone that presents to us personally, I like, I like you as individuals, but I'm not interested in one of your offices sitting down and discussing this. This is all public information, and we're going to have to bring all this information to the table and, and have a real discussion to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, again, you know, all this is important conversation, just. Ms. Chair, again, you know, all this is important conversation, just critical conversation. We did put in your package, though, for clarification, Mr. Terry, to your point. So when you look at school performance, those grades, keep in mind that proficiency and an 80/20 formula. That's why we keep mentioning that versus the growth data, that is the true indicator of what's happening within our buildings. Again, this, everybody across the state will tell you, an 80/20 formula is not, and it really penalized high poverty distance. Not trying to hide anything, but I want to make sure the public understand, this conversation is two different things, proficiency and growth. The growth is the true indicator, and the 80/20 formula, 80% proficient, 20% growth, is not fair.
All right, Mr. Herron, then we're gonna move on.
I got a question around grade level proficiency. What was our goals last year, and how far are we ahead or behind our own target with those numbers in relation to these, this information we're getting tonight?
So, I'm sorry. So grade level proficiency, every year, we set a goal and ask for a 5% increase. That is our goal. That is what we set every single year. We know that that may not be reached based on whatever maybe happened, like Dr. Manuel or Mr. Terry said, there's certain factors at certain schools that prevented, that we can share at the curriculum meeting, like you asked, that created some of those gaps for certain schools. But we can specifically share why certain schools weren't able to reach that goal, right? So some of it, to Mr. Terry, to Dr. Manuel's point, has been staffing. Some of them, it has been a sub all year, or there's not been teachers that are, that are brand-new in a whole grade level, right? That has a huge impact on what it looks like. So those are the things that we'll talk about in a minute, as far as a district improvement plan, those things that we're looking at to determine, what do we do? Because we do know those are things we're concerned about. When you're talking about attendance or any of those things, what are some things we can put in place to help those schools that may not be growing due to staffing issues or brand-new teachers that are almost the entire staff or gaps with no teacher? And so we have many different things that we're trying to put in place to help fill those gaps.
All right. So next on the list, we're gonna have district and school improvement plans by Dr. Wendy Dorstikar and Dr. Deborah Dallas.
So today, we are actually presenting the district and school improvement plan for information. This is not for approval tonight. So what you'll see, every year, as part of general statute, we have to present the plan to the board for information and then take it for approval. So tonight, we just want to go through the steps that we have to take and what is in here, and then kind of describe what happens. So the first step that a superintendent has to make is to, within 30 days of being identified a district that is low-performing, is either, one, recommend to the local board that the principal retained in current position, two, recommend to the local board that the principal be retained in current position and a plan of remediation be developed, or recommend the principal to be transferred, or proceed to dismiss or demote the principal. So based on this, Dr. Williamson has determined that all principals will be assigned and maintain at their school, retained at their school, and assigned a principal coach, and a plan for improvement will be developed between that principal coach and the principal to help improve the school. So that was the first step for improvement. What then has to happen as part of that step for improvement, each school has to revise or update their school improvement plan that has to be based on these 12 indicators. And the state requires the 12 indicators that we look at. So over the next two slides and in your packet, you'll see these are the 12 indicators every school must address as part of their school improvement plan. What happens next, the district has to create a plan, and that plan for the district must include how we're going to address support from the central office, if there's any policies that might need to be changed, and any strategies for early childhood, so K2. And so what you'll see in your packet, you actually had a list when we think about focus of the school district that shows which coaches are, or which supervisors are focusing on different schools. So there's a list that shows which person is coaching which principal, so you have a principal coaching list. Then you see the secondary supervisors, which is English, math, science, and social studies, based on the data or based on looking at if a, there's a brand-new coach, a brand-new AP, a lot of new staff on top of the data. So not just the EOG or EOC data, but those pieces of data, because we know some schools have almost 20 BTs or brand-new teachers. So how do we help them? So looking at that secondary supervisor who are assigned to those schools, and then we also, because there's a heavy focus on literacy, you'll see that we have an early literacy specialist that is hired through the state that serves us. She is assigned to certain schools to support that early literacy, and then our K5 supervisor is also assigned. And then we also have some MTSS-focused schools that'll start receiving support to help with implementation of MTSS. This does not mean the other schools do not get support, but this means based on their particular needs and the data, those are the schools we're going to focus on for those particular areas. The district then has to use these eight indicators to create the plan. So the plan that you have in either the PowerPoint or the handout, we have to use these eight indicators. When we think of developing, oh, I'm sorry. When we think of developing these eight indicators, we have to look at actions that we put in place that are not already happening, but new actions that we will add in addition to what we're already doing in the district. So I'm gonna let Dr. Dallas take over.
So our next slide includes our goals for this year. I know a lot of you like, just asked what are our goals. So we have our goal of a grade level proficiency improvement from 36.3 to 43%. We did include our CCR goals for reading and math. We are always working to move more schools off of a low-performing list, so we are not a low-performing district. Our goal is to increase graduation rate from 83.4 to 88. We're looking for an increase in ACT and work keys from 38.4 to 43.4. And we also do track our K2, specifically our DIBELS 8 data, to look for a change in our at and above benchmark percent from 55 to 62%. So as Dr. Carr said, there are specific indicators that we are required to use in our district plan. So the first one is A03. If you look at this, it's really about having support. How do we support our different subgroups? As you know, we really track our data so that all times, we know where our students are performing, and we want to be proactive. So if we see that something is happening, we look for ways to be able to provide professional development or support to make sure that those needs can be met in the classroom. We already mentioned our individual reading plans. We do have a regional support plan for our EC teachers. The next indicator was B03, which deals with having a culture, shared culture towards shared responsibility and accountability. And if you look at this indicator, it really talks about the steps that we're taking to address alignment towards a common vision and a mission and our strategic plan. We do not want random acts. We want to make sure that all of our actions and strategies are aligned. Ensuring alignment is the responsibility of all parties, including several district teams, including our district improvement team, our MTSS teams, our CTE PAC. Everybody is responsible for ensuring alignment. B07, you're going to see deals with school improvement strategies, making sure they're being implemented across the district, making sure that they're working, analyzing that. So you'll see a big focus of MTSS in this one, and the formation of teams. We operate a lot with professional learning communities, making sure that we pool people together in order to problem solve. We have several teaming structures that are utilized to examine our school improvement strategies, to analyze the impact, to determine if professional development is needed, and then to provide support, such as PLCs. We have relay coach meetings. We have several different teaming structures in place. C10 deals with a comprehensive professional development plan. Couple weeks ago, we did share that plan that we have right now as far as our professional development. PD is based on data and on identified needs, teacher and student needs. It's delivered in a variety of ways. We include face-to-face, we do virtual PD if needed, professional learning communities, coaching sessions, practice clinics, and just one-on-one coaching. Our next indicator is D03, which deals with recruiting, training, and supporting our personnel. We do continue to recruit and support our personnel. We host information sessions. We establish partnerships with local universities and providers, and we believe in growing our own. A framework of support, including ILT support, PLCs, BT meetings, coaching, and PD are all embedded at each school and across the district.
So to continue looking at the assessment data that we collect, so we already have a K8 common assessment when we look at reading and math. So this is in addition to that each school will conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. So that means they look at all data sources, they're currently working on it right now, to look at not just EOG and EOC, but teacher working conditions, subgroup data, teacher attendance, student attendance, so all those pieces that we were just sort of talking about and the impact it has on the data is what they're currently conducting and that we conduct every year as a district too. And so currently, we're collecting that data to share with our district improvement team. In addition, we have coaches and our ILTs working on data and planning meetings, and so part of our support is not only to help coaching them through those meetings, but also that they submit videos so we can provide additional feedback and support to help them continue growing as they work on those pieces. E03, this is really about two-way communication and how we communicate not only within the school system but with our families. And so this is a lot of the work that Ms. Brendland's already doing, but this also looks at how do we redesign our website to make it more parent-friendly or family-friendly, friendly, I'm sorry, creating stakeholder surveys. We have different advisory boards that we've talked about, but continue making sure that they're included, like our CTE, IEA, and all of those, and then providing professional development on how to work with our parents. So what has to happen next is that in 30 days, so in November, we will bring this back to the board for approval after we post this plan on our district website for also stakeholder feedback. So we have a survey that will be posted tomorrow for every stakeholder that wants to provide us any feedback or suggestions, that they can take the survey and provide us feedback. Once we take all, any feedback that anybody gives us, we will meet with the district improvement team to review those, to make any additional changes that may need to occur, and then we will make our final vote, bring this for final vote in November. And then the final step is that we will submit this plan to the state, and the state will review it and provide us additional feedback to say if we need to make any additional changes.
All right, Mr. Terry, got a question?
When I first, when I first joined the board, I had a, I may have, I may, should have asked this question a little bit different, but one of the questions I had was, was how can we come up with some metrics in order for us to define success in a different way? For example, I'm really concerned about our recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers. What if we set, what if we set a goal internally? What if we said that, okay, even if scores drop 1 or 2%, I know that's controversial. If we said, even if scores drop 1 or 2%, as long as we can recruit and retain and figure out a way to keep teachers in this district, that would be a success. Because my concern is that as we, we as a board, when we put pressure on, when we apply pressure in these meetings, then that pressure gets applied to the schools. And I'm not sure that there's an equitable amount of pressure being applied. I would love to see somebody present and say, you know what, at the district level, we figured out a way to take some pressure off of the schools. We figured out a way to relieve some duties or relieve some, some pressure points for principals and teachers. Are we telling principals that they need to spend 80% of their time in classrooms?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that, I'm being genuinely serious, is that practical? With, when they're dealing with buses, discipline, other things that may come up, is it really practical for principal and an assistant principal to spend 80% of their time in the class?
Absolutely. That's part of our turnaround model. They're all instructional leaders, and remember what we said earlier, not by definition, but by practice. This board did approve for an AP in every building. The intent was to free up principals from doing managerial work so that they could be in classroom coaching and working with teachers, and it is working. I continue to say thank you to the board for having the vision to put an AP in every building so that principals can, and they are spending that time. It, give or take, depending on what some issues are, but they're spending a tremendous amount of time, and that is reasonable. That is the national expectation.
So that's based on a data-driven analysis?
Based on our turnaround model, yes.
Is it specific to districts that are similar to ours in terms of demographics and challenges?
It's, if a district is using leverage leadership, that turnaround model, which is what we adopted, then yes. And again, it is a national model that's used across this nation.
Thank you.
I'd be happy for principals to share any concern about the 80%. You can hear directly from principals how that's going and how they're spending their time.
I'm collecting that data. That's, that's one data point that I'm collecting, one-on-one. So I appreciate that, though, if anybody's willing to share.
Trey Britt?
I got a statement and a question. Statement, this is like on that third bullet on step three, this is going to be discussed at the curriculum meeting board.
Yes.
And can we get feedback from what the stakeholders do on their survey at that meeting as well? And then, second thing, I know it's on Tanglewood and Lumbertons, I've seen specifically, but every school has this on their website, correct? That people can access?
Yes. So they all have a, so, and I have Mr. Cole over there always helping check, so sometimes when they update their websites, it gets moved, but it should be on their main website with a guest login so that you can see any school improvement plan available for every school. And they've just worked on updating theirs so that I could share them in those folders that I think Ms. Patty sent out to everybody, so you could see all their plans.
All right, Mrs. Terry, you've got one more, then we're gonna move on.
Let me just say that the first, I think it was the first, or it may have been the first and the second slide that you shared had information about, you know, what can happen to principals if scores are blah, blah, blah. That point was brought up three times at the last meeting, and I'm sure that every principal here, if they've got administrative license, they understand that well. And I thought it was interesting that that was the first or the second slide. That's the kind of narrative that I would, that I want us to start producing a, more of a conversation and more of a supportive approach, more of a coaching, you know. I think, I thought it was just interesting that we started off with like the stink rather than, rather than the carrots. And there's many opportunities for us to, for us to maximize our collaboration, just like what Ms. Christie said earlier, work with those schools that are, that are outperforming the average. And I've got one more question, if you don't mind. How, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment on a draft version of the district and school, district and school improvement plans, because for the past three years, we've actually passed those in October without any opportunity for discussion in terms of a draft. How was, specifically, how was the SACE report used to inform, inform our district and school, school improvement plans? Because the State Advisory Council on Indian Education provides some specific interventions that you can apply for their, for that population, which is our largest subgroup in the, in the district.
So as part of our comprehensive needs assessment, all data is looked at. So we pull not only the SACE report, but we pull all the data. So we have Cindy helps us pull some of that data to go, and it's the same data that we have already with each subgroup, so it matches the data that we're pulling from multiple sources. So we look at all data sources to make a decision. We can't use one data point because we need a comprehensive look at what's going on at the district.
And just to follow up, Mr. Terry, on your first question.
Just to follow up, Mr. Terry, on your first question, we don't want to give the perception that we're starting off by putting a sense of fear. We gave you that in the order that the state provided it to us so that you understand the steps. That is exactly how the state rolled it out, step one, step two. So we just wanted to make sure that was shared to you in the exact same method. We absolutely support our principals. I was a principal, I know the work it takes to be a principal. Nobody here thinks our principals are not doing their best. It is hard work every day. So please know, we do not think that about our principals, but that is the order that the state rolled it out, and we wanted to make sure it was rolled out exactly the same way to you.
All right. One more, Mr. Craig, and then we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next, to the next. Add them on the, on the agenda, Mr. Craig.
Oh, I'm not going to talk about eighty, twenty tonight because that would, would be here too long. I would ask this, and it was mentioned between Mr. Terry and Dr. Manuel. You know, we can look at numbers, we always see numbers and numbers do what numbers do. Testing never looks at things at school that I always think you need to look at, but it doesn't do it. And one of the things that was brought out tonight, if, if y'all want to go back into it, instead of us trying to do this individually, is look at each school in this county and look at what is the grade configuration? What was the teacher absenteeism? Did they have a certified teacher in the classroom? Did they miss fifty days? All of that is going to affect testing. Did they lose a teacher in December and had a sub the rest of the year? If you have a great configuration that goes K through four, your testing is not going to look like K eight in most places, in most cases. It's just not going to look the same. So bring us that back where you're sure and what's going on at each school with that. Because, you know, we never look at it and we don't know how many teachers were out or how many third grade classes at School Legs had a sub all year long. And again, we're not beating anybody up here. Testing is testing and is testing. And, and that's what we're judged by. There's great things that go on in our school system, but people look at testing and see numbers and see low performance. That's just, that's what it's been, not just now, that's what it's been as long as I can remember. So again, I'm not going to go any farther, but bring us that from the individual schools because I don't know that we've ever seen that. And it's something the curriculum committee, we look at it in the meeting and we bring it back and we talk about it. And some of that stuff is one of them things, if you can change it, you change it. Some of it, we might can't change, and we just have to deal with it. That's all.
All right, we gotta be moving on. Thank you, Dr. Wendy Dorsey-Car and Dr. Dallas. Appreciate it, thank you for all the work that you do. Before public comments, I'd like to excuse all the principals. I want to say thank y'all for coming out and appreciate y'all for the work that you do. Continue to be leaders in the building. Now, now we have public comments. The first up will be Crystal McCrow. Crystal McCrow. All right. Next up will be Tammy Bell. And Ms. Bell, before you start, you have three minutes, and after three minutes, you're gonna hear, within ten seconds of three minutes, you're gonna hear the timer go off. So thank you.
I've been practicing this. Good evening, my name is Tammy Bell, and I'm currently the chairman of the board for PAWS and a community ambassador for Stop the Pain. Our nonprofit group mission is to bring awareness to issues involved with substance abuse, mental health, and ways to build strong family units. We provide education and resources to help in each of those areas. I am also the mother of a thirty-two-year-old who lost his life to fentanyl poisoning December eighth, twenty twenty-three. I have twelve grandchildren enrolled in the Robinson County school system. This is a very personal fight for me. Tonight, I'm here to employ you to let's make our schools safer. Let's protect the most precious gift we have, our children, to the best of our ability. According to a January eighth, twenty-four article from UCLAhelp.org, an average of twenty-two adolescents fourteen to eighteen years of age died in the U.S. in the weeks of twenty twenty-two. That's one thousand one hundred and forty-four children, too many. Let's get in the locks on in our schools. Let's get our staff trained. Our nonprofit PAWS is willing to provide startup doses for every school in Robinson County for the first year to do the restocking. We're also ready to provide free training to every school in Robinson County. Why would we not use the resources we have available? Just as we have E P pins and A E Ds, we need naloxone on hand. I understand there's a stigma associated with drug use and overdoses, but fentanyl is a reality in our world today. How can we not do something about it if we have the ability to do so? Every life is worth saving, especially our children's lives. The drug is deadly, even in the smallest amount, if ingested intentionally or unintentionally. In Robinson County schools, only the resource officers carry naloxone. However, not every school has a resource officer on hand. Suppose your child is at Parkton and they overdosed, and that officer is at Rex Shrenner. What happens then? I implore you today. Let's be proactive, let's come together, let's not see a life loss before we do something. Let's get in the locks on in every school in Robinson County, readily accessible. The locks on does no harm if you don't need it, but it'll save a life if it is needed. There are other counties across our state in North Carolina that have policies in place. They have naloxone in their schools right now. So Robinson County Board members, I implore each and every one of you, let's do the right thing, let's come together. I have emailed all the board members, so you have my email, you have my phone number. PAWS, we have a website on Facebook, please reach out to us, we're ready to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell. We don't, we, we can't respond during. Turn your mic on.
The last time we discussed having the naloxone, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, available in the schools, there was some discussion around the fact that, that, that resource officers had access to it. But my question was, you know, why can't we get school nurses? And there was some discussion about, you know, training and all that. But I think the way we ended it was, if, are we saying that resource officers are more equipped to handle that sort of situation? And I'm not knocking them, I'm just saying, why can't we get our school nurses trained and get access to this in schools? Is it a liability issue? Or maybe it's something that we can discuss at our next meeting. But I'd really like for us to move forward with this initiative, if possible.
Well, we, I think it's something we'll take a look at the next board meeting. I, I get the staff, get Dr. Williamson and staff on it, then we'll take a look at the next board meeting.
Thank you so much, I'll make myself a note.
We're in the process of training our nurses now, right, Jennifer?
Good evening again, yes, we are in the process of training the nurses. I've been in consultation, I, we did receive Ms. Bell your previous information. And as a result of that, we did reach out to various organizations included. And so we do have a procedure that we are working on. Ms. Jan is in that process, I asked her to email you as board members in response to that. So there is a process, we will come forth tomorrow with some more information procedurally on how that would look. But that, that ball is rolling, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. All right, next we have Sheena Burgess. Sheena Burgess. Next we have Mr. Jonathan Brooks. Mr. Jonathan Brooks. Next we have Mr. Doug McBroom.
Hey, once again, we're a low-performing district. Now, after some of the things that have happened, I've changed actually a lot of what I was going to say tonight. Went through a lot of data, and Mr. Lockler said I definitely agree with. You can pretty much make the numbers say whatever you want, okay? Can't go back, back to the fact that we are a low-performing district. Four years ago, we were fifty-six percent, then the following year, we were fifty-seven percent. Then it was sixty-one percent, and we just finished up with seventy-two percent. I gave every single one of you that copy directly from D P I. Now, you can't go through that and say, well, there's something about it. We have to stop with the, well, this is unfair, this is not right, eighty, twenty, well, that's not a good way to do this, that's not fair. Okay, everybody's doing the exact same thing. The data that was just put up there, I just copied down some of the math, three ones. Okay, the state was forty-four to fifty-seven. They started off at forty-four. P S R C started at sixteen. That is incredibly low. Now, I have no problem with the fact that there have been gains, okay? But to start at sixteen and then try to basically look at it like, oh, well, we made so much improvement. No, we haven't, we're still low performing. And C changes have to happen, otherwise it's going to be the exact same thing over and over again. We're going to have some creases here, and then we're going to decrease over here. We went up eight, eight schools went up this last, and then eight went down. Wow, zero-sum game, we're not doing any better unless we make changes to things. It's never going to improve. I mean, we have kids who have been in school, and essentially they have been in a failing school district their entire careers. Hey, how many thousands of kids have to deal with that kind of stuff? And younger kids don't really understand, the older kids understand, okay? Because they hear it from other districts and they undersee, see that kind of stuff. And the parents, if you guys talk about having certified teachers, okay? Imagine what you would, you would, how short you would be if you did not have U N C P actually providing teachers every single year. Because you're looking right now, last numbers I saw from Melissa Thompson was about ninety to a hundred every single year is the shortfall. Okay, that would be incredibly low if we didn't have U N C P right here. So take advantage of that, but you need to train them, there has to be leadership. The leadership is lacking. Because, I mean, if we go through the last four, just the last four years, the leadership is not showing that we're trying to get where we need to be on that. Everybody brings ideas to the forefront, but doesn't change anything. Now, if you are new to the board, okay, please read the policies, okay? If you're going to do this, you need to be a change agent, okay? You do not need to be changed by the agents, okay? You need to be able to say, hey, I need to make a stink about this because the kids are the ones who are, are the ones who are in trouble. Okay, and if we're going to do that, that will help. But the thing is, nope, people are not held accountable. Some of you actually talk about and campaign on accountability, but there is no accountability because you all are still here. There's, nobody's ever said, hey, I apologize, we have not done good enough. Okay, and that's the way it has to happen, otherwise it will never change. Now, I've said before, I am more than happy to talk to anybody about it. Very few people ever, ever call, isn't that surprising? Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Reginald Oxendine Senior.
Hello, I'm Reginald Oxendine, and I appreciate you allowing me to come speak to you tonight. I would like to say thank Dr. Williamson, the board members, staff, parents and visitors for allowing me to speak a couple of minutes. What you've been doing tonight, I certainly appreciate it because there's a big need to improve reading and literacy in our county. A large majority of American children grew up without learning how to read well, but in Robinson County, that number is exceedingly high, and it doesn't have to be. It says Robinson County has a majority population of about seventy percent, and history has shown that people of color have been denied education access and the lingering effect in many ways do not read well. Sinus in them to a life of bliss because it is true that reading is fundamental. I have for the past twenty years been providing reading materials for children in schools. I started out with two audio cassette tapes and books, they follow along the audio cassette tapes and look in the books and learn to read. We have accelerated up to the point now we have, everything is online. We've got over three hundred hours worth of reading instruction with over eight hundred full-motion videos that explain exactly what their children are learning to read. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, and in our program, everything's in full-motion videos. So I don't know what that's worth, but it is very effective and the children enjoy it because it is fun and activities. And anybody that can move a mouse and look at a computer can teach themselves to read. And, and the thing about it, the parents don't have to help them, and it helps the teachers in school, the principals, because everything we've got is self-directed instruction.
Thirty seconds.
So we appreciate you looking at the information I'm going to send you. And the thing about it, the children can teach themselves the reading. They, what we've got is supplementary materials to supplement what you're already doing, and they can do it at home, on the school bus, or any other place that they'd like to be. But all they need is a computer. We did get a curriculum administrator for one of the top ten products in America a few years ago that we're proud of.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you.
All right, next we have action items. The P S R C District Mental Health Plan twenty-four, twenty-five. Jennifer Freeman and Mr. Dale Hawks.
Good evening again, at this time, I'll yield to Ms. Hawks to share with you the District Mental Health Plan, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members. With the plan, I'm going to start on the adoption of the plan and the reason why we have this school mental health policy. In June twenty twenty, session law twenty twenty seven was approved by North Carolina General Assembly. The vision was for students who are socially, emotionally and mentally and physically healthy so they are ready to learn and have their full potential inside the classroom. If you go down to where it says the district, we use a suicide risk assessment and threat assessment that is conducted by our counselors and social workers. Our main hub for our mental health is with Trillium, which is our L M E for the district. Then I'm going to go to something that is new this year. It says it's on page nine. P S R C or North Carolina Stronger's Connections Grant, N C S C G, which allowed us to hire three school-based mental health staff in the schools. They help and assist our counselors and social workers in identifying early and also doing a case management of our students that have school mental health issues and concerns, linking them with providers and ensuring that there is follow-up and a continuum of care for them. If you go down to page thirteen, how we address school mental health in the school district, this is the first year we've had Second Steps, which is our S E L platform. It's in K through thirteen. So this is the first year we've added in in high school. We have professional development, we sustain professional development through the SCORE grant. This is the final year for SCORE. But we use the grant funding for that to have professors from the department, I mean, I'm sorry, the University of North Carolina at Pembroke to come out and do our P D with our counselors and our social workers in school mental health and with the school counseling department. Then we also focus on self-care. We also do a lot of data diving with our Gaggle research and the information that we get from Gaggle and the stuff that we have as a touch point for our kids to see what they're saying, what they're doing, and how things have changed and adapted in the past couple of years. If you go to the suicide risk assessment, anytime that we get something through Gaggle or from a teacher. or from a teacher, or we hear anything with our students, and they say any kind of indication about suicide, or anything negative about their mental health, we do the risk assessment. That's our first line of defense with our students. So I gave you a copy of what that looks like and the steps and protocols that are used with our staff. The mental health flyers are something that we give to our families. I'm going to do one more thing about on page thirty-seven. If you pay attention to the posters, these are mandated by the state to be up and posted around the school. The thing that changed this year is also at the very bottom, it has the call nine-one-one, and it also has the Child Protective Services number. So we can make sure that our kids are aware that they are supposed to be safe, and if they aren't not feeling safe, what numbers that they're supposed to call. With our staff, we do a six-hour training for all new staff, and that includes information about school mental health for them as well as our students. And then for returning, we have a two, a two-hour training that's required for them each year through Canvas. Do you have any questions?
Dotney Manger.
I make a motion that we approve the district's mental health plan twenty-four, twenty-five.
Motion being made by Dotney Manger that we approve the district mental health plan. A second being made by Henry Brewer. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Revised PSRC early college calendar. Mr. Bobby Locklear.
So, good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Board members. So come before you tonight to ask permission to revise the early college calendar based on Hurricane Debbie that occurred back in August. We had to delay the start, start of school, excuse me, about three days. That was August seventh, eighth, and ninth. So what we are asking for is that we take October fourteenth and fifteenth, leave those days as teacher workdays, but we also have the flexibility to make those remote days for our students. Also, to take November twenty-seventh, which is a teacher workday, and make that a remote learning day as well. This gives us the ability, again, to leave teacher workdays in place, but gives teachers time enough to assign assignments for those days to be completed, but also allows us to make up the time that was missed due to Hurricane Debbie. And this also does not impact our bank time, which we feel we may need to save for the winter.
All right, miss, a motion being made by Mr. Craig Lowry to accept the, the early college change in the calendar. A second being made by Mr. Henry Brewer. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
All right, and Chairman Leach, if I may, Dr. Williamson asked that I just place some shelter information at your tables. I think there were some questions when, I think maybe when Hurricane Debbie came, came, came on shore. So I've placed just a very brief information based on conversations I've had with the county and also with DSS.
Thank you. We have fundraisers by Mr., I'm sorry, fundraisers by Miss Erica Sessner.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board members. I included fundraisers for the listed schools, Long Branch, Lumberton Junior, Pembroke Middle, Red Springs Middle, Southside, and Townsend in your packet.
A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons, and a second has been made by Mr. Craig Lowry to approve the fundraisers. All in favor? All opposed?
And I also included the monthly financial report, and I can answer any questions anybody has.
Turn your mic on, Terry. Mr. Terry?
Ms. Erica?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. I just got one quick question. Do we receive any additional resources in terms of funding for being a low-performing district?
Yes, we do. Not necessarily because of low performing, but the statuses that are assigned to the schools that Dr. Carr and her team went over, the CSI and TSI schools. There's some additional funding for those statuses, but not all low-performing schools.
So it's not the entire district?
No, sir.
What does that funding typically go toward?
Various things. Right now, we have 105 and 115 funds. We're using those, and I may have to get more of the details I can send and bring back to the board, but just from my memory, all the basic supplies, we have some STEM TAs. At one particular school, there was an absence issue, so we are funding a teacher assistant that focuses on absenteeism. So it's kind of specialized per school. There's four, I know Townsend, Red Springs Middle, Fair Grove, and Rosenwald. And then the 115 schools, I'll have to get those for you, but that's additional personnel, assistant principal, we're actually paying for additional one at some of those sites, additional teacher position. So it varies, but those are some of the things that we're using those funds for. And we get an allocation every year, so right now, we just got additional 105 money. It's close to eight hundred thousand. It's going to be split between those two schools, so that's kind of a, it's broken down by ADM. So each school, we get their portion of that eight hundred based on the, the number of students.
And it's earmarked because they're low performing?
No, it has to do, Dr. Carr could definitely explain that better than I could, I'm sorry. It has to do with their TSI, CSI designation, excuse me.
And what does CSI mean?
CSI is based about, so that designation came three years ago. They can't come off of it yet, but it is based on being the lowest five percent in the state. And so those four schools, each of them has to have their data analyzed and determine what specific needs they have to determine how the funds can be used. So, for example, like Ms. Erica said, if there's attendance issue, we have one person, we hired somebody just to work on attendance for our students at that school to focus their time there. So each of those then has to be approved by the state for that specific need based on what the data is showing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mr., is that all for Ms. Erica? Mr. Trey Britt? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
A motion being made by Mr. Trey Britt to approve the monthly financial report. A second was made by Mr. Craig Lowry. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. Mr. Melissa?
I'm moved at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County. Go into closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel. North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-eighteen point eleven, A-one and six, and to consult with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County. North Carolina General Statute one-forty-three, that through three-eighteen point eleven, A-one-three.
And we, a second, all right? Closed session.
Should we close? Um. Come out of closed session, sorry.
A motion has been made to come out of closed session by Mr. Henry Brewer. A second was made by Mr. Craig Lowry, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, a motion, do we got a, no, never mind. Motion to accept, uh, closed session minutes? A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons. A second being made by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? All opposed? As amended. A motion has been made to approve personnel as amended by Mr. John Simmons. A second was made by Ms. Melissa Ocean, all in favor? All opposed? Uh, seven, Dr. Williamson.
Mr. Chairman and board members, after going through the interview process, I want to recommend that the board implore Dr. Sherry Herndon as our new Director of Student Services, please.
A motion has been made by Mr. John Simmons to approve, um, Dr. Sherry's.
Herndon.
Herndon, um, for the, for the board position. Student services. Their student services. And the second been made by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? All opposed?
We have Dr. Herndon with us tonight. Dr. Herndon, one minute, you want to say something to the board, please?
Good afternoon, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, thank you. I look forward to working at the district level. I think this is an honor to be recommended for this position and being able to come to the district level as the Director of Student Services. There's a lot of work to be done. I look forward to building on the positives that are already in place and working with the board as well as the cabinet members to continue making a positive influence on the lives of our students and staff and other stakeholders in the public schools of Robinson County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and board members, after going through the interview process for the principalship at Ossendon Elementary, I want to recommend Ms. Bird, Kenesha Bird, as the new principal at Ossendon, please.
All right, a motion being made by Mr. Henry to, um, to move Ms. Bird from Sister Principal to Principal at Ossendon. A second being made by Mr. Craig Lowry, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes got it.
And then I want to say thank you to Ms. Jadae Hall for the work that she's done in student services. She's done an outstanding job and we appreciate her time and service. That's all I have.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion being made by Melissa Ocean, second being made by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? Mean to adjourn.